It is worth the rest.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Representative Mark Dion, House District 43, part of Portland, part of Thelma, and I serve as the House Chair, and I apologize for being a little late today. Thank you.
Chris Dumas.
Senator Whitson, Representative Dion, and other members of the Joint Committee of Energy, Utilities, and Technology. My name is Chris Dumas, and I'm the Information Technology Director for the city of South Portland. I first want to apologize for not having any written testimony. I wasn't sure if I was going to make it today or not, so it's a last-minute decision. But I wanted to go on saying that I am a very strong supporter of LD 1063 and 1185, and as Rick Page has mentioned, anything else that gets broadband out there for the state of Maine. I want to take this time to talk about South Portland's approach to broadband that other municipalities may be able to compete, and also to speak about some of the benefits of broadband for the state of Maine. South Portland recently partnered with GWI to bring fiber into our municipality. We just finished the deployment of a high-speed fiber backbone to about four miles of our city, and we really hope to expand. We chose the model where South Portland was an anchor tenant, which means we invested a significant amount of capital to the project, and GWI met us halfway. So, South Portland paid about 50 percent of this, and GWI paid the other 50 percent, kind of a mutual partnership. With that, South Portland is essentially leasing the fiber for 20 years, or what they deem the useful life of this fiber. Within the first couple of months since we made the announcement, we had several businesses came up and asked for this broadband service so they could expand or do things that they weren't able to currently do. And we also had 150 residents come up and say, "We want this service." Sadly, most of those residents were outside of our initial window, and we were not able to cover them, and we have no real ETA at this point as to when we can do that. South Portland is also a founding partner to the national organization Next Century Cities. Next Century Cities brings municipalities from all over the United States together to talk about how to bring broadband further out there. We get to talk to each other, collaborate, see what people have done, what worked and what didn't work before some of us actually do it. South Portland recognizes that high-speed broadband is a crucial foundation for the future of economic development, not only for the city but for the state of Maine. Businesses need bandwidth, whether it's an employee working out of their home, or anywhere in the state for that matter, a healthcare provider providing imaging diagnostic services, or a small business trying to expand their online sales broadband is critical. The workforce is becoming distributed. Jobs can now be performed from any location that has a broadband connection. Wouldn't it be nice if a resident of Calis could work for a company in Bethel, or a resident of Mattawosker could work for a company in Kittery without having to commute? This can happen with the broadband network. Businesses could expand to Maine from other states. Our residents could expand their job search to places that have jobs when their immediate locations do not. Our residents could have salaries and benefits from other states while living in the great state of Maine. An example of this is Lionsgate Entertainment expanding to Chattanooga, Tennessee, who we also mentioned earlier was a founding member of Next Century Cities. Lionsgate's home base is in California. They were able to expand to Chattanooga, Tennessee because of their broadband network and the cost of living compared to California. And they collaborate every day across the broadband network across the United States so that people are on both sides. This is an example that broadband attracts businesses. In closing, I just want to say, high-speed broadband infrastructure in the state of Maine will not only attract the businesses but will allow the residents to work from anywhere. The business technology is evolving, and broadband needs will only continue to grow. Let's build a solid foundation for our state's future. I'd be happy to answer any questions that may have. Thanks for having me.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for coming up. So, how many different entities, public or private, are connected to your next new network now, approximately?
Approximately right now, one, because it's finally terminated this week. So, after my vacation, I'll be connecting all the municipal buildings up, and GWI is working to get the rest of the businesses connected. But I think of the residents that are in the area, we have about 21 who are actually there out of the 150. And I want to say half a dozen to a dozen initial businesses, but I don't have that exact number. That's what GWI wants.
It'll be mostly businesses?
That's -- we're doing a strong push on the business side of the House, and we're using some of the development in our major business districts in the city, which I would like to talk about.
Did you come off your own vacation?
Yeah, actually. I started vacation today.
Well, thank you. You must be going to Hottest. Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thanks.
Is it Brianna Warner?
Senator Whitson, Representative Dion, and members of the Joint Committee of Energy, Utilities, and Technology. My name is Brianna Warner, and I'm the Economic Development Director at the Island Institute in the base of Rockland. I testified today in strong support of LD 1063 and any other bill that will increase broadband connectivity in rural Maine. Maine's year-round islands and remote coastal communities are integral to Maine's identity and a crucial part of Maine's history, heritage, and culture. They are also home to some of Maine's most important industries. Yet, they are struggling to survive as their populations continue to age, and young people move away from the islands in search of better jobs. Most of Maine's islands have incredibly slow broadband connections. This is a huge disadvantage in today's economy, and it prohibits island businesses from reaching customer bases, inhibits residents from taking telework opportunities, and makes it harder both for new young families to move to the island and for young islanders to remain in their communities. For those of you who aren't familiar with our organization, we are a nonprofit that works to sustain Maine's island and remote coastal communities. Our economic development program is a new one, and I spent the last four months in this position forming the program. And when I asked people what the biggest barriers to economic development on the islands were, the overwhelming answer was broadband. Island economies will continue to be stifled until broadband speeds are improved. In one community, lobster co-op members told me that they're trying to sell directly to online customers in order to cut out the middlemen and have more profit go directly to those who fish off the island's waters. Unfortunately, they can't manage their own website because of unreliable and slow broadband, and so their entrepreneurship is stifled along with their efforts to get a better price to their lobster. On another island, a group of artists and craftsperson told me they couldn't sell their products online because they didn't have internet speeds adequate to upload their information. And one mentioned that they tried for days to upload a simple video of their pottery studio. So, they had to finally just get on the boat, go to the other side, upload the video, come back, and their products were all sold within the next two weeks, which shows the power of online sales for island communities. The cost to make these sales, however, and the time and money of a round-trip boat ride to the mainland to perform one simple task is pretty unsustainable. Slow broadband speeds are prohibiting island businesses from growing and reaching their customers, many of whom are separated from them by a body of water. Possibly more than anywhere else, island businesses need a web presence in order to connect with their customers. One thing that Paige didn't mention today is there was 30 knot winds today, the ferry was canceled, and he still came over. Sounds somebody to drive him over here. That's how important it is for islands to be connected. Island communities have spent a tremendous amount of time and money recruiting young people to make an island their year-round home. They have advertised the benefits of a close-knit community and the quiet solace of island living, which is very attractive to many people. But young families have moved to the islands only to move a few years later because of the lack of career opportunities. On one small island, I heard of no less than three new families that have come to live on the island with plans to maintain their current high-paying jobs by teleworking. Their internet connection, however, wasn't fast enough. And despite investing in costly and extensive private satellite wireless systems, they weren't able to continue their career and stay on the island. So, they took their children and moved off. This isn't even to speak of residential broadband concerns, which I think was laid out very well by the folks who spoke before me. Private companies have thus far not felt that investing in these small island communities is profitable. Despite promises that they would improve the broadband infrastructure of the islands, 11 of the 14 unbridged island communities are still underserved. Their population just isn't big enough to be economically profitable for many of the telecom companies. Island communities are starting to look at local solutions for addressing this problem. In Islesborough, like Paige outlined, the community will soon vote on whether to build an extensive multi-municipal broadband network. On Chabie, many years ago, helped by the Connect Maine Authority when they first started, I believe it was their first grant, actually, is a group of islanders formed their own internet company in order to better serve the island's customers. The Cranberry Islands, Vinyl Haven, and several other island communities are hoping to conduct studies on their current infrastructure and determine how to improve their own network, but they don't have the money. By passing LD 1063, these island efforts would be more likely to succeed. Reliable broadband infrastructure on islands is quite simply about sustaining a way of life that we as a state value. It's about keeping these communities viable into the future. It's about survival of these communities. A Maine without these islands would be a much different and much worse place. I thank you for your time.
This may not come across well, but I mean, isn't the beauty of the islands because they are isolated?
The beauty for summer residences, but we'd like to keep these to be year-round sustainable communities that, you know, if there are many other states where islands have become just summer communities, and we can look to those as examples that we want to avoid in the future. It's a very healthy marine industry in the lobster, and right now, people are doing well. But, you know, you can also move to the mainland and just go out to the island and fish. And the islands are getting older.
Thank you very much.
Do you have a question?
Okay. Gary Cohen.
Good afternoon, Senator Whitson, Representative Dion, members of the committee. I'm going to -- you each have a copy of my written testimony. I'm going to reserve my oral testimony until LD 1185 so that others who are here from municipalities might speak. Though I will take any questions if there are any who are now. Okay, thanks.
Is it Jeff McCarthy? Jeff McCarthy? Jeff. Jeff.
Thank you. Senator Whitson, Representative Dion, and members of the Joint Committee. My name is Jeff McCarthy. I'm Vice President for Business Development at Maine Fiber Company. We are the owners and operators of the Three Ring Binder Middle Mile Fiber Network in Maine. Although MFC is officially neither for nor against LD 1063, we support both the goals and the policies of the bill, and we strongly endorse the call for a broadband service strategic plan. Based in part on our experience building and operating the Three Ring Binder, we believe the pragmatic approach outlined in this bill improves the likelihood that public and private investments will be sustainable and will have tangible long-term benefits for Maine. Maine Fiber Company was formed in 2009. The company provided matching funds for a federal stimulus grant that's been brought up by several people here and taken advantage of by several people here. It's the grant built an 1,150 route mile fiber optic network, which we completed in 2012, ahead of schedule and on budget. This is a middle-mile fiber network, and it currently passes through 172 towns in Maine. Today, we lease to the town of Greenwood, a critical fiber connection between their fire department and the town garage, and we provide fiber connectivity between transatlantic cables that land in Canada and Boston for international carriers. Every day, we help local ISPs, CLEX, and wireless carriers, and now, we're starting to help municipal broadband efforts expand into rural areas. We have CLEX and wireless carriers in Washington, Arustica, and Piscataquis counties using our network. But just to understand what a middle-mile network is, the phrase, as a middle-mile provider, "We don't make broadband, we make broadband better," okay? So, you'll never see our name on a broadband bill, but we're back there somewhere in that network, helping to facilitate the delivery of broadband services there. Since joining MFC in 2011, my focus has been on sustaining sustainability and growth, whether meeting with local economic development representatives or attending international telecommunications conferences. The goal is always to understand what needs to be accomplished and how the fiber optics can help you do that, and do it in an economic fashion. We believe that LD 1063, with its focus on planning and accountability at both a state and a local level, will help ensure that future investment in broadband infrastructure has sustainable, measurable economic benefits. The Community Broadband Planning Section requires municipalities to identify specific broadband needs and goals. The Broadband Service Strategic Plan directs the Connect Maine Authority to set measurable goals and timelines under which they should be accomplished. Our experience with the Three Ring Binder tells us that having a well-thought-out plan, executing it carefully, and understanding all the potential uses of the newly constructed broadband infrastructure can result in a sustainable economic asset, as ours is. We believe LD 1063 provides a very solid framework to accomplish just that. Thank you very much for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Yes, sir. No questions.
In reviewing the Three Ring Binder location, 172 towns, are there significant major areas of our community that are not served by the Three Ring Binder would be served with a further expansion?
Absolutely. Great question. I have to say that a significant percentage of our inquiries about the Three Ring Binder, "Can you help me here? Can you help me there?" We have to say, "Well, we could, but it would cost an awful lot of money to get our backbone network out there." That said, we've worked with private businesses and ISPs and CLEX to expand the network and will continue to do so. But finding funding sources to do that is difficult, and I'm hoping that as part of this planning process, if necessary, expanding the Three Ring Binder out to an area that might be, you know, a few miles off the network, or maybe 20 or 30 miles off the network, could be in scope.
The Three Ring Binder does not, if I'm correct, does not come through Lewiston, Auburn, Augusta, Waterville, et cetera. It goes to the north and south of that. So, there's not a significant pattern of population and economic activity here in central Maine that doesn't have access to it?
That's correct. The original architects of the network, several who are here in the room, designed the network really to go in, mostly to go into the very rural areas, right? So, there's a ring that goes all the way up into Fordham, and of course, it goes all the way down to South Berth as well. But there's a lot of fiber on the western part of the, in the western part of the state that covers those areas. But there are significant areas in the middle, if you will, because it's kind of goes around the perimeters of the state. Places in the middle of there are big gaps. We'd love to build, you know, basically bisectors throughout the network so that more and more people can take advantage of the open access subsidized fiber.
Is there a question? Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. We've heard a lot today about the middle mile and the last mile. Is there a first mile? How do you define it?
That's a good question. We have, we have the Three Ring Binder out of necessity, right? The original business plan had to be modified pretty quickly. We had to think on our feet when we first built the network. And so, we have some of that sort of first mile network happening through, or first mile carriers happening through our network. We connect to, basically, to a transatlantic cable in Canada through a partnership, and we, through another partnership, we connect down to Boston. So, we are now attracting main recognition carriers into the state of Maine. And it's not always easy, but we're trying to convince them to make a stopping point for them and to deliver their services and capabilities. So, the answer is yes. We connect to, by connecting to Boston and the cable that goes across to Europe, we have a lot of those tier-one, if you will, providers on our network already.
Yes.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you. I have been away from the legislature for six years, and I have the whole Three Ring Binder phenomenon, I have to be my actions. As you speak, I'm realizing that I really don't know the details of financing the Three Ring Binder. Can you be more detailed about that for me?
Sure. So, it was a BTOP grant, a federal stimulus grant, that was authored by largely GWI and Jeff Laterno, who are here. He designed the network and solicited all of the input and the participation by a number of carriers in the state. The federal government, in round one, said, "This is a shovel-ready product, which, a project, we will award $24 million." Maine Fiber Company was created to fund the matching funds with the over 20 percent, about $7 million. So, about $32 million was spent to build an 1,150 route mile network with over 200,000 strand miles of fiber unit.
Your name is Jim, and what about the $7 million? Is that, where did that come from?
That's private funding. So, we have a group of investors that got together and put that funding together, and we're just now at a point where they're pleased with the return on that investment, and we are feeling pretty bullish about the future with the company. But I can say that candidly, it was, it was not as easy as we thought to turn an 80-20 type of funding arrangement into a profitable business.
And so, the solicitation of that investment, did that help determine the geography of the?
Nope. I mean, the geography, the actual physical location of the network, where it was built, that's the question. It came to us built, and we speculated a little bit about how we could turn that into a sustainable asset, and it's taken about three years, but we did.
I hear you're conflicting statements over the last couple of months. One is that the Three Ring Binder is not going to be important in expansion, okay?
Who said that?
But, I mean, how does this all tie in together?
Right. Really good question, right? So, by having open access dark fiber available in some of these rural areas, companies like, I could call out some names, but I won't, but, you know, local CLEX are now able to expand into areas of the state with enough capacity and control over their network that they can deliver residential services. In some cases, there are fiber-to-home efforts up in Arustica County and Washington County that are going on, using our network to connect back to their equipment and to the internet at large. So, that's what's happening there with the expansion of the network. People are using it, I would say, to organically grow geographically their network. So, a company that might have operated in Lewiston or exclusively in the whatever area may now be working, you know, building network up in Arustica County or down east, that type of area. So, it's doing what it was supposed to do there, albeit a little slower than we expected, and we're having to work closely with those companies because these are all commercial efforts to get their budgets together and work with their budget cycles to expand their network in different parts of the state. We also work closely with Jeff Laterno and his organization and are expanding our service of schools under the Maine Schools and Libraries Network.
So, all of these different lines, basically, I mean, it's all part of the highway?
Yeah, it's the, it's the backbone.
Yeah.
So, people that want to use, people that want to establish a new location somewhere can use us as the highway to get there, and then they built those side streets and byways.
Thank you very much. Rick McCarthy.
Good afternoon, Senator Whitson, Representative Dion, members of the Energy Committee. My name is Rick McCarthy. I'm employed by Eden Peabody Consulting, and I'm here this afternoon on behalf of the Mayor's Coalition. The Coalition brings together the mayors of 11 of Maine's larger communities. We're here today strongly in support of LD 1063. Broadband expansion, providing better broadband service to our residents and businesses, is an issue that the Coalition identified last year when we started talking about opportunities we saw in the state. In fact, we had a large forum in November of last year, brought together some of the folks that are also members of the broadband coalition that have been in front of you today, and took to look at all the challenges that we have. What we found when we sat down and talked amongst ourselves is that there isn't a single community in Maine where really everybody has access to high-speed, high-quality broadband. Everybody needs to do it better. Everybody needs to expand fiber optic networks and accessibility, and we want to see that happen. And we're very pleased to talk with the folks that put LD 1063 together and realize that they were thinking along the same lines, and that this does present a plan and an opportunity to take the Connect Maine Authority, to expand its scope, and to move Maine, all of Maine. Obviously, this is not a problem. This is, still remains a very serious problem in terms of access in rural areas. But to move all of Maine to a situation where everybody has access to the best world-class broadband, which is what we need to grow the state's economy over the long term. So, we're very, very supportive of this proposal. I'll give you a couple of examples, and one is the city of Sanford. I think you heard from Steve Buck a couple of weeks ago on the other broadband bills. Sanford is sitting there just a few miles from the Three Ring Binder, but they don't have access right now. So, they're in the middle of, really, a couple-year-long planning process to figure out the best way to do that, to connect. So, you know, it makes a huge amount of difference for them and for business growth to get access to that highest-speed fiber, and they're working on that. In the city of Portland, which has some of the best connectivity in the state, they still don't have the high-speed fiber optic networks everywhere. Mayor Brandon announced earlier this year that he's forming a working group to try and look at how they could, they could make that next step and expand fiber optics everywhere. So, it's, this is a challenge for the entire state, and I encourage this committee, as it looks like you're going to, to move forward. I know when we started talking about broadband last fall, we thought, "Oh, we hit on something. This is great. Let's try and drive this." And it quickly became apparent that everybody else came across the same idea, that there's lots of energy throughout the state. I think that's wonderful. So, I think this committee has lots of good ideas in front of you. And as I said, we strongly support 1063. It'll establish a state broadband policy and develop a broadband service strategic plan that expands the duties of the Connect Maine Authority, including promoting broadband, supporting local and regional broadband, and supporting broadband investment. It encourages community broadband planning. We're doing some of that. We can certainly do more, and updates funding sources for the Connect Maine Fund. We think those are all the right steps to take. And thank you for your time and attention this afternoon. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Really, thank you. Any questions? CNN, thank you very much. I have a request to step out of the proponents and go to a opponent because of time, so, Jim Cohen, you're the bad guy.
So, nobody would notice. My name is Jim Cohen, and I'm with the chairman here on behalf of Verizon. We are against the bill that is before you today, but actually, I'm here to say nothing pretty much about everything that has been said so far, because everything that has been said so far is talking about fiber and high-speed access for people of Maine, and Verizon is a wireless, mobile wireless provider. We don't provide that service in Maine, so we have absolutely nothing to say about much of what you've heard. The reason we're opposed to the bill has to do with the funding source for what's being proposed, and I'll explain why. I'll also say that you may hear from others who talk about an industry broadband provider amendment, and just let the committee know that Verizon does that amendment. So, what I want to focus on is why mobile phones are different than the fiber types of service that we've talked about. And I'm going to start by referring you to page two of my testimony. You'll see a big, bright picture of Verizon's footprint. Some of the other companies might have a similar type of footprint, but as you'll see, it's a national service. It's mobile. It doesn't recognize municipal boundaries, and that's the way the service is intended to be. And that contrasts with the map that you'll see right below, which comes out of the FCC's 2015 Broadband Availability Report. And you'll see it's very location-specific, and that's by design. It's about fixed access to fiber or other wires to provide the service, or it is a wireless connection. I want to draw a distinction because Representative Gideon correctly pointed out that in places like Washington County, they're using wire, a wireless solution rather than a wired solution. But that is different. That is fixed base wireless. It's not a mobile product. You can't buy the service and then go to other places. You have to be right where the tower is. It's unlimited high-speed access to the internet, which is different than the service wireless provider, mobile wireless providers offer. And I want to point out, back on page one, the 2015 Broadband Availability Report mentioned that there are important differences between mobile and, and-- that there are important differences between mobile and, and between fixed broadband, talking about trade-offs between speed and mobility, that mobile broadband differs from fixed broadband in terms of speed, latency, price, usage allowances, consistency of service throughout an area, potential for congestion, and that fixed services generally have unlimited or very high usage allowances, whereas mobile broadband data plans do not. So while I've been in front of the committee and lauded the benefits of mobile service, both are very important services, but they are different, and that's why the Connect Me Authority does impose a fee on fixed base mobile, but does not impose a fee on mobile wireless. So I want to point out a few other facts. Number one, I've mentioned before, wireless providers, mobile wireless providers have invested about $110 million a year on average. That is substantial. If the $600,000 estimate is accurate at the current level, you know, it's a huge disparity. That's the amount that we're privately investing in Maine for the mobile product. Is there any benefit? You know, if we were included in the fee, maybe in theory, there would be some money that could come back. The point of the rest of my testimony is to illustrate that there really is no, there's no path there. Our mobile networks are mobile, there's no local government that's going to be able to put up a fiber, there are no private companies that could put up towers that would integrate in our network. Essentially, it would be taking money from wireless customers and then giving it back to maybe a different wireless customer, creating some competitive issues, and being less efficient than the services that we provide directly. So those are the points that I wanted to make primarily, and I guess the last is, mobile service is important to Maine. It is very important to Maine. Broadband by wire is very important to Maine, and I would encourage that the committee and the legislature not take money from one service, the mobile service, that is good and important for Maine, and give it to another service that is good and important for Maine, and risk making that service less competitive, discourage private investments. There are other tools that we think would be better and a better direction for Maine to go in. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Representative Deans?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do, in the amendment you talked about that's coming along someplace, is there a suggestion of funding that's separate from taking it from wireless?
So the, this bill here was about adding a fee, and so, as you know and others on this committee know, there are many times where the competitors within the industry do not agree. We were able to come together, and others can talk more to it than I, but we were able to come together on many issues, including funding, and I think there was agreement that if we want to promote broadband, we shouldn't be adding fees to it. That's not the direction we've seen in other jurisdictions that you've heard about today. So there, I would recommend, and my testimony suggests, if you want more mobile wireless types of connections, helping local municipalities, municipalities should step up and plan for it. That would be helpful. New York had $500 million worth of bank settlement fees. That's what they're putting to work. There are other bills you'll hear today that have different funding solutions that maybe we find more palatable.
Representative Deans?
When you use the word "other tools," you know you wouldn't go unchallenged. So what are those other tools?
Well, you mean other funding mechanisms?
You just used the word "other tools." I'll let you describe that.
Thank you. Well, Representative, you are obviously going to be presenting a bill later, and that is a general fund bill.
I wasn't looking for a plug.
And I may not be testifying against that bill.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Mr. Cohen. It's actually nice to switch to opposition just because it gets a discussion going, and you know, obviously, you want to enact a good policy, and it's nice to hear both sides of it. Is the bill, as you interpret it, if a municipality were to study broadband opportunities, is the presumption that wireless would not be one of the opportunities identified? Is that a concern?
We've given it lots of thought to think of possible ways in which there would be value to communities or private investors to have that kind of municipal activity, and the only thing that we could really find for the mobile side, you'll hear others talk about the fiber or landline side, so I'm just talking mobile side, we couldn't find a path that made it work, other than when a cell tower goes up, that involves zoning. And if local governments in advance did the planning work, and it's different than the kind of planning that this bill talks about. This is not about trying to figure out where the coverage is. This is about towns deciding where on the footprint of their, of their community they could tolerate having a tower. So that's the local planning exercise that if towns did, that would be one component of lowering the cost and therefore the barrier to cell towers going in. Now, there are other barriers too, which is the tower itself has a substantial price tag, and so, you know, when you read most of these other municipalities and states and what they're doing on the landline side, they very much recognize it's about attracting private investment and about having, you know, coming to bear with ways to streamline the regulatory process, bringing local resources to bear to attract investment. But on the mobile wireless side, because the networks are so integrated, you couldn't have a town just put up a tower and guarantee that it would, it would fit in, it could be a stranded investment. So we just couldn't think of a path that, that plant, local planning in the sense